This meeting is being held in accordance with the schedule of meetings adopted. The organizational meeting held January 5th, 2022. Adequate notice of this regular meeting. The Kennelworth Board of Education has been provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the local source on January 20th, 2022. The meeting location has been changed by a notice on May 5th, 2022. A copy has been filed with DePereaux and Clark, posted in the board office, Kennelworth Grove Hall, Brearley and Harding Schools, as is provided by the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you, Mr. Gennella. Please rise and join us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with which we speak.
Justice, right?
Mr. Gennella, can we please have roll call?
Biner.
Here.
David.
Here.
Drogon.
Here.
Habether.
Here.
Jankowicz.
Here.
Ladati.
Here.
Panici.
Here.
Tears.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
All present.
Okay, thank you. We'll now have receiving of the minutes. Can we please have a motion to accept the minutes from May 9th, 2022? Second? Motion made by Mr. Habether, seconded by Mr. Biner. All those in favor of receiving the minutes from May 9th, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motions carried. Reading and acceptance of monthly correspondence. Mr. Gennella, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not have any public correspondence this evening.
Okay, perfect. We don't need to accept anything. Okay. Now, superintendents' report and presentations, Mr. Arlington.
Good evening, everybody. We have a lot to celebrate tonight, including Brearley's top two graduates. And to say more about them, I'm happy to introduce you to Mr. Davies.
Hi, good evening, everybody. A pleasure to be here. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to recognize two of our finest students at David Brearley. What Ryan and Raquel didn't bargain for is that by achieving the accomplishments of salutatorian and valedictorian, there's a lot of work involved, whether you're writing a speech or going to a bunch of recognitions. But it's a great pleasure to recognize the two students in front of the Board of Education, because it's important. I believe that a rising tide lifts all ships, and Ryan and Raquel have certainly been a rising tide for us. And so it's a pleasure for me to introduce them to you, the board. So please allow me a few moments with each. So every year, we recognize our top students in the class. This year, the class of '22 has emerged as a very strong, very strong academic powerhouse with these two students. First, I would like to recognize Ryan Tyra. Ryan is the salutatorian of our school, and he has achieved the second highest GPA over his four years of hard work and effort. Ryan has been an exemplary student here at David Brearley. He has been a member of the Scholars Academy since 7th grade, a football player, homecoming king, and president of the National Honor Society. Ryan has been a member of the David Brearley Scholars Academy since middle school. A quick little anecdote about Ryan. Ryan has arguably one of the most memorable homecoming king crownsings in school history. Homecoming was back in the fall, in the fall semester, and it was around that time when quarantining was going up due to the pandemic. And we learned on the same morning that we learned that Ryan had to quarantine, around the same time that we learned Ryan had earned top votes from his peers for homecoming king. So I remember, I'll never forget, calling his mother on the phone to make sure that Ryan was on the Instagram livestream watching his football poster get crowned king of homecoming. And what a memory that was, David Brearley's first virtually crowned homecoming king, and maybe hopefully our last virtually crowned homecoming king as well. Anyway, that anecdote just describes the kind of person Ryan is. He rolls with everything. He's a young man who's able to take everything that comes his way and manage it very, very, very well. Ryan is headed to Florida State University next year, where he plans to study business and accounting, and he's going to be off to great things down in Florida. We will miss him greatly at David Brearley, and I want to just wish Ryan very well in his future. Congratulations to Ryan.
(applause).
Valedictorian, as you know, is the student who has achieved the highest GPA over her four years of hard work and effort. And we are very proud to recognize Raquel as the class of '22 valedictorian. Raquel has pushed herself extremely hard academically during her entire time in Kennelworth Schools, always striving to be her best. She has been involved in extracurriculars, school and community activities. She's a member of clubs, the newspaper, peer leadership, where she served as a mentor. Additionally, Raquel finds time to be an active member of the Brearley Theater, which she's been heavily involved in. Outside of school, Raquel is a Girl Scout. She earned her Gold Award, which is a highly prestigious award that not many young people achieve. She volunteers at the rec center as a basketball coach. She participates with the Clean Ocean Action Spring Beach Sweeps in Sandy Hook. Also, Raquel has helped to raise awareness for blood donations through the American Red Cross. My anecdote about Raquel takes us back to her junior year, when Raquel was still working towards her Girl Scout Gold Award. I remember that she approached me, and again, this was in the midst of the pandemic, she approached me about her project involving fire safety. And her requirement, one of her requirements with the Girl Scout Gold Award was to present to a group of adults. And she requested that she present to the Brearley faculty at a meeting regarding her Gold Award. And during the time, we were holding all of our faculty meetings on Zoom. And I remember, I was nervous for Raquel, because, you know, she's sitting in front of a screen in front of all of her teachers that she's ever had and may have in the future. And there she was, cool as a cucumber, moving through her presentation about fire safety. And she exhibited great poise. She presented with a calm confidence. And she spoke extremely articulately, and I think that's a testament to her education and to her skills as a young person, is how articulate she is and how a sense of maturity is exuding from her at all times. And I thought to myself during this moment that this is someone who's going to make something of herself. And of course, here she is now, the valedictorian of our school. Raquel is heading to Johns Hopkins University next year, where she plans to double major Biology and Pre-Med, yes? Minor in Philosophy?
English.
English, I'm sorry. Minor in English. And so she's headed off to a great university, and she's continuing, she will continue to make us proud as she heads off. We expect great things from her, and we have no doubt that she's going to be very successful in her future. So congratulations to Raquel Conseco, our valedictorian.
(applause).
All right, we'll make Vincent move out of the way for parent shots, too. All right, everybody, stay there. Stay there, we need the parent shot. Don't ever deny mom a chance for a photo. She will get it.
(inaudible)
He's getting better at that. It took like 20 minutes.
I don't have to wind up anything.
That's true.
All right, congratulations, Raquel.
And Ryan. You're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to leave.
Slide three.
Up to you. I'd like to now turn our focus from our students to some standout teachers. Five teachers will earn tenure in September after four successful years of service to our district. Have every faith they will continue to show the same, if not increased, strong performance they showed in their first few years of teaching over the course of their tenure here in Kennelworth. Happy to honor their work by making a few quick remarks about each teacher. I try to do this based on what I know of you gents, so hopefully I get it right. We'll start with Mr. Questa. And you're, I already gave them their tokens of congratulations outside, so to avoid the awkward "after I'm done," you could just give away. Yeah, thanks. Mr. Questa's Questions for Questa is an almost daily learning activity he facilitates in a science class. He brackets off and posts on the board random but science-focused questions students generate for him daily. He takes time each class and devotes it to answering students' questions as part of his Questions for Questa instructional routine. While this may seem like a small instructional move, it speaks volumes. It tells me Chris creates a classroom environment where students are so engaged in the content area that they contribute to it. It tells me he creates a classroom space where wonder and inquiry are not only valued but celebrated, too. Finally, it tells me students feel comfortable sharing with Chris, taking risks, and are open and available for learning. Chris has taught numerous classes across branches of science and grade levels, including designing our STEM 8 course. As an adjunct professor, he weaves his high expectations for his college students into his daily work with our high school students, thus creating a natural bridge between high school and post-secondary learning. He also recognizes the importance of being part of the school community, and you can be sure to find him at school events supporting and encouraging his students. Chris, congratulations.
(applause).
Unfortunately, Greg, Greg couldn't be here tonight, but I'm still happy to honor him with a few words. Mr. Miller's energy for teaching and learning is palpable. After even a brief conversation with him, you'll likely very quickly realize that his energy is contagious. Teaching has always been hard. In the past few years, it's harder than ever before. Still, Greg approaches his vocation with a sincere interest in his students and a deep commitment for enhancing his craft. In getting to know Greg, I can speak firsthand to his professional interests in growing as an educator and his passion for always giving his students his best. As a middle school language arts teacher across his four years here, Greg has taught a range of ability levels, including accelerated courses as well as courses intended to provide basic skills remediation. He sees and believes in the value of social and emotional learning and infuses the big tenants of SEL in his language arts classes, and also teaches our standalone middle school SEL course. Like so many of the teachers you'll hear about today, Greg is a valuable part of our school community outside of his classroom. He serves as a volunteer to the marching band, has been a class advisor, and is currently our GSA advisor. Particularly in the last role, Greg is committed to creating an inclusive and welcoming community. We're lucky to have him. Congratulations, Greg.
(applause).
Yeah. As someone who's been a teacher right out of college, only been a teacher and studied to be a teacher, I'm always intrigued to learn more about people who come to the profession as a second or third career. Greg is one of these people. After falling in love with coaching and his work with young people, Greg transitioned from a career as an environmental engineer to a health and PE teacher. He takes seriously his commitment to teaching health and does so in age-appropriate and engaging ways. For instance, not too long ago, I visited his classroom, where as an entry point into a unit of unhealthy eating, Greg was showing his students a rather hard-to-watch video on how chicken nuggets were made.[786.12][786.12](laughter) I left the room thinking twice about feeding them to my own kids, but was also reminded of the hard work and creativity it takes to engage middle schoolers. Greg's able to do this and simultaneously create a warm and caring environment. He connects with students personally and still holds them to high standards. In his time here, Greg has served as soccer coach, PE and health teacher, and curriculum writer. At a time when health curriculum in New Jersey will come under great scrutiny in September, I'm glad to know Greg will be one of the teacher leaders facilitating important conversations in appropriate and sensitive ways. Our students are in good hands. Greg, congratulations.
(applause).
Alan Phillips sees teaching PE and health as more than an opportunity to teach fitness and good lifestyle choices. He sees it as an opportunity to teach the habits and dispositions we used to refer to as soft skills that are now increasingly becoming non-negotiable, must-have skills of the 21st century, through his focus on sportsmanship, teamwork, and equality. Committed to developing strong social interactions between and among his students, Alan also sees the PE and health classroom as one where equity should be taught and honored. I recently had the privilege of reading a thank you note he received from one of his high school students. The sentiment sums up Alan's focus and professional strength. The student wrote, "Mr. Phillips, thank you for believing in me and pushing me, not only into being a better athlete, but into being a better young man." Alan's taught high school and middle school phys ed, middle school health and driver's ed. As a coach of several teams, he's led to conference championships. And as a Harding and Brearley graduate himself, Alan serves as a strong role model for what his students could be. Congratulations, Alan.
(applause).
I apologize, Alan, for not advancing. In June of 2020, the pandemic short shrifted many of our seniors from the excitement of end-of-year celebrations. Jake helped make up for these lost experiences. When the district rented buses for the PTO to make pit stops at each senior's house to deliver yearbooks, door decorating materials, and other goodies, Jake was the first to volunteer. Whereas promise of two long days on a hot and humid bus traveling across Kennelworth and the towns of choice students might have deterred other teachers, it didn't for Jake. That same year, when there was an oversight on the part of the district and an 8th grader was mistakenly omitted from a virtual yearbook that we put together, Jake volunteered to be part of a celebratory drive-by we did of the student's house. All in all, Jake is one of the chief stakeholders responsible for concerning himself with Brearley's school spirit and good culture and climate. For years, I thought it was silly when somebody would look to extol a person with exceptionally good school spirit by saying their blood pumps the colors of the school. For Jake, I fall on my sword and say there is no better description for the way his energy and commitment to Brearley connects our school to the life force. His blood pumps blue and gold. Inside the classroom, Jake continues to shepherd the work of moving us forward in several areas related to computer science by developing and teaching courses such as web design. Additionally, he's the adult behind the Be Nice Clothing Company. You also remember Jake from last month's, the month before's AP Computer Science Students' Presentations. We're lucky to have Jake's passion for our students and commitment to community building. Jake, congratulations.
(applause).
All in all, I hope we can give one more round of applause to Jake along with Chris, Greg, and Greg, and Alan. And we look forward to supporting your continued good work over the upcoming years. Congrats, guys.
(applause).
Slide three.
Yeah, go, guys.
You've got finals to start with.
Thank you. Take care.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Congrats, Raquel.
Thank you.
You guys are good.
Thanks, Reed.
Bye.
Thank you.
I just want to wish you a good night.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congrats, Ryan. Congratulations. Okay. There's probably no natural segue into a presentation on HIB, but I'm going to do it anyway. Under New Jersey law, school districts are required to annually complete a self-assessment in their harassment, intimidation, and bullying practices and procedures. This presentation is a fulfillment of that requirement. There are several core elements in which each school self-assesses. They're related to our HIB programs, policies, trainings, curriculum and instruction personnel, and reporting procedures, and others as listed on that slide. In each of the core element areas, there are then sub-indicators. In total, there are 26 sub-indicators. In each, we report on a continuum score of 0 to 3. Determination of 2 meets and exceeds requirements, so we're striving for all 2s and 3s across the indicators. Our anti-bullying coordinator, our anti-bullying specialist, counselors, and other stakeholders come together to help complete the assessment that we then use as a mechanism for growth to drive future HIB procedures and actions. In accordance with the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, the scores reported here on this slide are published on our district website. So keep in mind the total score that a school can receive is 78, and is comprised of the core element scores as shown. When you compare the total scores from the previous year, or previous years, you'll see growth from the 2019-2020 school year and healthy stasis and satisfactory performance over the last two years in both buildings, which you can see there, right? So for '21-'22, Brearley scored 73, Harding 63. These numbers don't mean much without an analytic deep dive. So I'll start here. We should note that we met or exceeded all indicator requirements. Much of our social and emotional learning work, along with our climate and culture efforts that we've been engaged in, have helped to catalyze this growth. I'm particularly pleased to report growth in the last two areas here, HIB reporting and investigations, because we've really doubled down on training our HIB specialists and HIB personnel with a focus on ensuring our investigative and reporting procedures are reflective of best practices in the law. Of course, even though we've met or exceeded the indicator standards, we always want to keep an eye on where we can grow. So these are areas for us to continue to focus on moving forward. They include professionally developing a wider understanding of HIB prevention and reporting for staff and parents, doing that better by leveraging the work of the school safety and school climate teams. These teams have been meeting more regularly over the last several years and more markedly bend towards HIB matters now than in prior years. And also, while we've made strides in providing instructional materials to parents, this is still an area in our classroom where we want to devote more attention. You'll also see something I bolded, which I think is very important and definitely will be a focus for us for next year. We're already having conversations about how to make it more conceptually understood that around social media use and off-campus events, right? If the ramifications of what happens off-campus comes to the school building, right, and impacts the school so that it substantially disrupts the educational experience or the operational running of the district, it can be investigated as HIB. So that's not really a widespread, there's not widespread understanding of that quite yet, but that's something we want to, we want to work on moving forward. So this is a learning point we raise with students, often in grade-level assemblies and in other fora, but surely this is an area of focus in our future parent education work. So once again, even in non-school-sponsored off-campus activities, if an alleged act of HIB substantially interferes with the learning environment because the matter has made its way to the school and therefore significantly disturbs the educational or operational running of the district, the off-campus event may be subject, and it's those who participate in it, may be subject to an HIB investigation. That's a growth area for us moving forward. Madam President, I am happy to take questions from the board.
Any one have questions regarding the HIB or Mr. Arlington's presentation?
There's also, since we're on the topic of HIB, a monthly HIB report in your packet. These are the results for May's cases. Later in the meeting, you'll be voting to affirm, deny, and/or modify the report you looked at last month, which reflected April's cases. Happy to give you a minute or two to look at those cases.
Does anyone, would you like another minute or so to look over anything?
We can give you another minute or so, Paul.
Do we have an understanding of why we're kind of spiking here at the end of the year in Brearley?
Sure. I could share more about that in closed session, but I don't, I'd have to look across years, but I think at the end of the year, right, that's probably not a too uncommon situation.
There's eight total cases for the year.
At Brearley?
At Brearley.
Yeah.
And four in the last two.
Well, it's going from July of last year through May this year, so.
Yeah, there's more than eight.
There's eight in the last two months.
So one thing, there's a new component to the HIB legislation that will be, that we're required to report on, and that might answer some of your question, too, Mr. David, beginning in July. The remedial efforts we're making for students who repeatedly engage in acts of HIB, right, so repeat offenders, if you will, and sometimes that's the case on the report that you view, that those are some of the same students. Okay, that concludes my report.
Hold on, are you okay? Want to take another minute? Do you have anything you can ask? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Arlington. We'll now have Report of Committees, Review of Resolution, and Board Discussion. First up is Facility and Finance, Mr. Ladati.
Okay, hi, sorry, good evening. I'll start with my report. At the reception earlier this evening, we acknowledged the efforts of a custodial and maintenance staff. The records throughout the code assisted the district in getting students and staff safely back into the classrooms as soon as was allowable. In addition to efforts to take on many projects throughout the year, saved this district thousands of dollars instead of setting farming and building projects out. So kudos to those gentlemen and Davies and Vince and Kyle for getting that done. This year, we're also very busy with various projects. To wrap it up, I would just like to highlight a few of the projects, the facility, for the facility, which included Harding Gym renovation, Harding Basinery project, Harding bathroom upgrades, Harding basement ventilation, modular classrooms separately, solar panels installed on both buildings, the Energy Savings Incentive Program, which included all new LED lights district-wide, several new rooftop units, softball field renovations, this conference room, and obviously the new LED signs for each school. Also, Mr. Gennella, in his report, Mr. Arlington included an analysis of the contracts in accordance with PL 215, Chapter 47. Pursuant to that law, Kennelworth Board of Education intends to renew, award, or permit to expire contracts previously awarded by the Board of Education. These contracts are and have been and will continue to be in full compliance with all state and federal statutes. That's number 17 on your resolution list. As for resolutions, there's 25 of them tonight. I did review the financial records, the billing list, there's no line item transfers, everything's proper on the financial side. The remaining 2021 resolutions, the majority are for items such as contracts, prices, transportation services that are needed to place the school, to be in place to service the upcoming school year. With that, I'm not going to go over every one of those resolutions, but I guess myself, Vince, or Mr. Arlington can take questions on it. Anything you have?
Resolution was seven, not 17, I believe. It says, could you like to renew or?
Yes, number seven.
I have a whole list of them, but would you be, I just can see I didn't expire. Would you be adding that if there were some?
I'm sorry?
Number seven.
Right.
It says renew, and then it has all of these, assuming all of these are renewed.
Correct.
Yes. And then again, it says permit to expire. If you were having some expire, would they show up here?
No.
Okay, so you might have been.
Right.
Renew? This resolution eight, implementing any court deduction recommended, is that ongoing every year, or is this something?
This is cyber, cyber liability. Cyber liability is very, well, it is not new, but it's very much in the forefront of what's going on right now. It's hard to get insurance, so we have to do certain things to make us compliant with our insurance, such as multi-factor authentication when you log into the certain various systems. There's a whole criteria on the technical side that you're required to do. So what I plan on doing is, once Mr. Rodriguez and his team get through that basic level in order to comply with the
And we have additional ways to support families who may be homeless. For example, we've been supporting some food insecure families with gift cards, and we have other ways to make sure their needs are met.
I know we are responsible for the homeless in our community. If someone becomes homeless in Elizabeth and they live in Elizabeth because their house broke down, we need to still provide transportation.
If a person is, correct me if I'm wrong, I know. You want to handle that one?
All right, so the homeless statute, if you become homeless while living in Kennelworth, Kennelworth becomes what's called the District of Residence, so you are responsible. But the law also has this provision that if, so if you're homeless here and you move to Elizabeth because you have a relative you can double up with, if you continue, if that family continues to live in Elizabeth beyond one year from the time they become homeless, they may still be considered homeless, but the law deems that they are now deemed domiciled in Elizabeth, and the financial responsibility shifts to Elizabeth. It's a very tricky situation because the districts don't, when they get that letter that says, oh, hello, we're notifying you that this family now is deemed domiciled in your district, they're usually not happy to get that. But if they understand that, yes, this is the situation, they accept it, and then the financial responsibility shifts.
I'm the municipal welfare director here for 30 years. I know about that part of it. And I know if it's a year they do have to go, I'm just wondering why we, what would we have used this money for and why wouldn't we? Because we still have to provide the transportation for a while.
During that first year.
Yes, so that's handled just.
If the parent requests the transportation. Often, the parent doesn't request the transportation. They just want to continue to send their kid to the Kennelworth School. I always drove my kid to the Kennelworth School. I'm going to continue to do that. They find it sometimes less disruptive than to be put on a bus. So once again, we're not, it's not costing us any money to have the kid going to Harding School or Brerly School if they're homeless and living in Elizabeth. So it's not really that often that we've had to expend funds.
I know it isn't often, but it has happened.
Correct.
But I'm just saying, what would hurt to take that money if you needed it, or is there the downside of it? I don't know. All I know is that we are responsible.
Administratively, it's a lot. I mean, districts like Elizabeth, they're getting hundreds of thousands of dollars, okay? We're getting $5,000 for the amount of reporting that Mrs. Cuculo, myself, would have to do for this. It's very, it's very arduous.
Just want to make sure. If we took that money, does that open us up to anybody from the county or state? I mean, that's homeless to come to Brerly yet?
No.
It's just locked into Kennelworth.
Right, right.
Because that was another one of my concerns. Okay, thank you.
Let me just go through this, because I had just, all right. Auxiliary services for the non-public schools, I understand. English is a second language and all of that. What happens? Do they?
Which number?
Oh, I'm sorry, resolution 19.
The non-public schools, we're just a conduit for the state to get the money.
I understand. So, and the school is aware of that? That would be St. Teresa's.
Yes. Yeah, we do that every year.
And they're aware of all of that?
Yeah, we have a consultation meeting with them annually to provide the various non-public program services.
Okay, I think that's it. Sorry, I just had some questions.
It's fine. It's fine. It's just, there's nothing on negotiation.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Ms. Ladati?
Thank you. Nine resolutions for this meeting. Resolutions 20 to 30 are school year '22, '23, new hire, a new kind of curriculum instruction and innovation. Resolution 31 is a maternity leave absence. Resolution 32 are tenure appointments of the teachers that were just here in the meeting earlier. Resolution 33 is approval of home instruction. 34 is approval of substitute staff. And that is it.
Thank you. Anyone have questions for Mr. Jankowicz? Okay, thank you. Next up, curriculum instruction. Mr. Jankowicz.
Thank you. Resolution 35 is curriculum writing for certain, for a certain staff, and then 36 is approval of the HIB report from April. Any questions?
And then 37, the resolution for the policy. That's curriculum, right? Should we read that?
Transportation 38.
Well, yeah, it's technically the last one. It was.
Mark, I'm sorry, resolution 37, policy reviews and curriculum instruction. Do you want to just read it?
Okay, sure.
First, please.
Yeah, 37, so on the policy review, resolution 37 is for, abolishes the following job description, which is supervisor of curriculum and instruction.
Thank you. Anyone have questions for Mr. Jankowicz? No? Okay, thank you. Any old business? Any new business?
I just wanted to say, this past weekend, I was fortunate to be able to attend an event at the Mitchki House. They had a celebration for duty. And Dr. Raisin Nelson Century, who came and did a portrayal, carried a covenant story. And the KDA provided food for the event, and there were a number of Brerly students, seniors, juniors, and one sophomore who were also present and part of it, helped out at the Mitchki House with setting up and decorating and things like that. It was a really wonderful program, very interesting. The students there really took it in and were very vocal with the questions when we went to a question and answer session with Dr. Century. And it was just really nice to see the kids in there intermingling with members of the community in this way. I believe it was Ms. Quintero, Quintero, that was the teacher that was overseeing them, if I'm correct. If I'm not, I apologize.
Thank you. We just want to mention a few things. We'd like to congratulate all of our athletes and conference champions on their victories this spring season. Also, to congratulate all the middle school and high school students that received scholarships and awards, and all of our students that were involved in various clubs and participated in school-level events, similar to what Mrs. Zimmerman mentioned. We're proud of you. We thank you for your participation. We would also like to acknowledge the Harding PTO and the teachers, students, parents, administration for their successful Field Day. It's a lot of work and a lot of planning. Administrators also. One more important group we'd like to mention is the Kennelworth Police for their daily support in keeping us safe and for their assistance with preparing the students for the prom and the eighth grade dance and, you know, student safety. We are also excited to share the upcoming news regarding the referendum. Mr. Arlington has been putting out communications, and we would like to invite everyone to review the information on the website and to encourage anyone to reach out to the superintendent, supervisors, building administrators with any concerns, clarifications that you may need. Okay?
I just want to thank Kyle and Vince and their staff, because this year is unbelievable. And they're, I get emails at nine o'clock at night on a Sunday, and the staff is phenomenal, and I thank you very much for your hard work, because I see now you're never off.
Okay, at this point, we would like to open the meeting to the public. Is there a motion to open the meeting to the public? Second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Haberth, seconded by Mr. David. All those in favor of opening the meeting to the public, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motions carry. Mr. Gennella, do you want me to read the?
Don't do that, sorry.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. Public comment will now be accepted. The Board of Education sets the limit to the public to speak at the board meeting to five minutes per person unless prior permission is, has been granted by the Board of Education for extended time pursuant to the Kennelworth Board of Education by law 0167. For the record, please indicate your name and address for all comments.
Anyone would like to make a comment at this time? Please step up.
Make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Biner. All those in favor of closing the meeting to the public, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, eyes have it, motions carry. The meeting is now closed to the public for comment. Mr. Gennella, at this time, can we please have a roll call of resolutions?
Yes. We have 38 resolutions on this evening's agenda. Do any of those need to be voted on separately? No? Okay, then this is for resolutions 1 through 38 on the agenda. Biner?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Drogen?
Yes.
Haberth?
Yes.
Jankowicz?
Yes.
Ladati?
Yes.
Tears?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
Wonderful. Mr. Gennella, is there a need to go into closed executive session this evening?
Yes, there is.
Motion to do so.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mrs. Drogen. All those in favor of going to executive session?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, eyes have it, motions carry. Mr. Gennella, can you read the?
Yes. Be resolved, Board of Education, the Board of Education meet in private session from which the public shall be excluded to discuss the topics of personnel, as well as the superintendent's annual evaluation, attorney-client privilege, potential litigation, and matters involving the safety and security of students, staff, and schools, which private discussion is being held pursuant to Section 7B and 8 of the Public Meetings Act. Matters under discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as final decisions are made and voted upon.
Okay, thank you. So we will not be returning into public session this evening. So we will be going into executive session now.
Yes.
Thank you.